It is now nine o'clock, and I ask that you would please bow your heads and join me in a prayer, and then we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we just come this morning just thanking you for a new day. We ask that you just be here in the midst and that we be in the midst of you as we continue to conduct the business of this county of Henry County. We ask that you please bless this United States of America, the state of Georgia, and again to bless our dear county. We just pray this in all things, and in your Son Jesus Christ, and all those that agree, please say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to now call this meeting to order, and we just do want to announce that there is only one announcement regarding the agenda, that there will be no executive session and will be removed from our order of business today. Are there any other questions or comments or revisions regarding the agenda? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? The agenda is accepted, with the exception of the executive session. We're now moving to our next item regarding the Proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, and we'll ask Ms. Melissa Robinson to come and present that proclamation.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. This morning, we have a proclamation recognizing October as Fire Prevention Month and Fire Prevention Week. Whereas in 2015, fire departments across the United States responded to 365,500 home fires, which resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home construction, and many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic gases, and smoke when burned make it impossible to see and breathe within moments. And whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely. Whereas Henry County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our county, and urge everyone to have a home fire escape plan in order to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation, including having two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas practicing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing and practicing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of October 2017 shall be known as Fire Prevention Month, and the week of October 8th through 14th be known as Fire Prevention Week throughout this county, during which time all citizens are urged to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of the Henry County Fire Department and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2017. This third day of October 2017, signed by Chair June Wood, attested by Clerk, County Clerk Stephanie Braun. And we have some members of the Fire Department here.
Okay, well, thank you. So we'll join them for a picture. Okay? Thank you. So we do thank our firefighter team and appreciate it, and we have made the note that every second counts, and we will work on our home safety plans. So thank you again. We're now moving to the consent agenda, and the following items shall be considered on the consent agenda. We have two items from the building and plan review. One is a resolution approving a request for the creation of a new streetlight district for Winchester Estates subdivision located on Rogers Road in District 3. We have another resolution approving a request for the creation of a new streetlight district from Bella Landing Phase 2, Unit 3 subdivision located on Corsica Lane in District 4. Are either one of these items need further discussion to be removed from the agenda? Hearing none. If there are no items, then we will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda items are approved. We're now moving to the next item from the building and plan review, and this is not on the consent agenda primarily because it is Commissioner Barm's subdivision, and it's regarding two streetlight districts, I mean a streetlight district as well. So, any comments, Commissioner?
Yes, I would appreciate that, and yes, I will recuse myself. I actually did the affidavit, signed affidavit, witnessed all the signatures, so I'll excuse myself.
All right, thank you. So we'll ask Mr. Gilbert to come and present, so good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. What you have before you this morning is a resolution for a new streetlight district in Christie Place subdivision. There are 16 lots, they're proposing four new streetlights, the provider is Snapping Shoals EMC. The monthly cost would be $53.20 for an annual cost of $638.40, and then we would assess back onto each property owner in that subdivision $39.90 on their tax bill to cover the cost of these lights. If you do have any questions on these, I'll be more than happy to answer that.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions from Mr. Gilbert? Okay? Hearing none, and the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? And Commissioner Barm abstaining. Okay, thank you. If we can get Commissioner Barm back, that would be great. All right, we'll begin moving into our next item from our purchasing department, and we thank you, Mr. Purvis, for your presentations this morning.
Good morning.
So we'll begin with the first item, which is a resolution awarding a bid for generator services and maintenance.
Yes, ma'am. Service and maintenance of generators located at various county locations is greatly needed on a regular basis. Having a contract allows quick access to these services and guarantees prices will remain firm throughout the contract period. Seal bids, bid number 18-07, were solicited through the purchasing department, and seven vendors responded. Power and Energy Services of Powder Springs of Georgia submitted the overall lowest bid. The bid tabulations are attached. Funding for the services are available in the facility maintenance budget.
Okay, well, thank you. Are there any questions regarding this presentation? Okay? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a second. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now I ask Mr. Rocky Romero to come and present a resolution approving the bid award for construction of the Old Jackson Road at South Bethany Road as part of SPOSS 4.
Good morning, Chair and Board members.
Good morning. Good morning.
Old Jackson Road at South Bethany Road is an approved District 1, SPOSS 4 intersection improvement. Seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department for the intersection improvements of this, for this project, bid number 18-08. Five seal bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is $802,272.48 from pavement construction. Funding for the construction is available for the approved project budget. Staff recommends approval of the bid to pavement in the amount stated. In addition, this resolution also authorized the chair or the county manager to approve change orders less than $50,000. I'll take any questions.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. You may proceed to the next resolution regarding the approving of a budget amendment and bid award for construction of the, at the Mill Road and State Route 81 intersection.
Thank you, Chair. Mill Road at Estera 81 is an approved District 2 SPOSS 4 intersection improvement project. A budget amendment in the amount of $200,000 is needed for utility relocation and construction. Staff recommends using the $200,000 from Industrial Parkway at Estera 20. The intersection of Industrial Parkway at Estera 20 will be improved by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Therefore, funds will be available for the use of Mill Road at 81. Georgia Department of Transportation should have the intersection of Industrial 20 completed by the end of this year. Seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department, and eight bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid was from McCoy Grading for $956,518.50. Staff recommends the, recommends approval of the budget amendment and also the construction for the intersection improvement as with the amount stated. Also, this resolution authorized the chair and the county manager to approve changes, change orders less than $50,000. I'll take any questions.
Thank you. You've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments regarding this resolution? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving to item nine regarding the resolution to approve the budget amendment and award state contract for a new full-service kitchen and catering kitchen at the Locust Grove Senior Event Center using SPOSS 4 funds, and we welcome Mr. Burkhalter this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. The voters of Henry County approved the SPOSS 4 referendum, which included funds for a new full-service kitchen at the Locust Grove Senior Event Center. The SPOSS Department's senior services and park and recreation consulted with the Gordian Group, which is the facilitator of the NJPA EZIQ contract and Brown and Root Industrial to develop the scope of work for the new full-service kitchen and catering kitchen, and the work orders attached to the resolution. The scope of work includes all design, labor, material, supervision, equipment, insurance, taxes, overhead, and all of the necessary services to construct a full-service kitchen and a catered kitchen, including the kitchen equipment. The SPOSS Department is requesting authorization to use SPOSS 4 funds to complete the new full-service kitchen and catering kitchen at the Locust Grove Senior Event Center utilizing the NJPA EZIQC contract in the amount of $558,799.29. A budget amendment is necessary transferring $50,000 from the SPOSS 4 District 1 Fire Station 2 account to the District 1 Locust Grove Event Center kitchen account. Anyone has any questions?
All right, you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
There's a second. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a question, ma'am. We've been working on this for about six months, and the seniors have been patiently waiting. What's the construction time for this kitchen?
Completion in March, next year. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we've had a first and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Resolution is approved, as read.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move into our planning and zoning public hearing regarding the resolution to adopt the Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element Annual Update for the 2017-2021 to the Atlanta Regional Commission, and we'll ask Mr. Stacy Jordan Rudacil to make the presentation.
Good morning, Chair Wood, Commissioners. The 2017-2021 Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element Annual Update was transmitted to the Atlanta Regional Commission on July the 18th of this year, and I'm pleased to say that the county received notification on August the 21st that the Department of Community Affairs approves of our update with no substantive changes, and so we're free to adopt. And so staff does request the adoption of this 2017-2021 Short Term Work Program and Capital Improvement Element update.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so we will allow persons wishing to speak will have a total of five minutes each, so if you're wishing to speak, would you please come forward now? Calling again, anyone wishing to speak, you do have five minutes to speak. Hearing none, this concludes our public hearing regarding this presentation, and we'll now open the floor for any questions or comments by the board. Commissioner Prince.
I just have one comment as to the citizens. I would urge you to look through this paperwork and see what your commissioners are working on and where our priorities are. There's quite a bit in here. So, is this available online for the citizens, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and under P and Z?
It's definitely available under the agenda, and we'll make sure that it's available under P and Z.
Okay, that'd be wonderful. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Prince.
I just have one comment as to the citizens. I would urge you to look through this paperwork and see what your commissioners are working on and where our priorities are. There's quite a bit in here. So, is this available online for the citizens, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and under P and Z?
It's definitely available under the agenda, and we'll make sure that it's available under P and Z.
Okay, that'd be wonderful. Yes, thank you.
Hearing none, we're called for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, that is approved. We'll now move into our Public Safety segment from our Henry County Fire Department regarding a resolution to improve, to approve the increase in ambulance transport rates and authorizing the Henry County Fire Department to perform annual reviews to ensure rates stay within local industry average, and we'll ask Deputy Chief Chris Sherwood to make the presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
Before I get started in this quick presentation, I just wanted to remind everybody and the citizens of the ribbon cutting on Thursday for Station 14. It's located at 1875 Hampton Locust Grove Road. Ribbon cutting will be at 1:00. So we'd like to invite all citizens to come and participate in that. Over the past few months, staff have, has been preparing and reviewing the current ambulance billing and current rates compared to local as well as national rates, and we prepared this short presentation for the benefit of your viewing as well as the citizens to see the reasoning behind this request. Our last request is back in 2012. The increase that we had back in 2012 still kept us below the national as well as local averages. So with current review, we're requesting that we, we review this annually and make adjustments as we see needed. Since 2012, our call volume has increased approximately 20%. It's a crucial time. There's, we're expecting that our call rate as well as equipment expenses will continue to rise, and we'd like to capture some of that information annually as well as stay current with the current trends that are going on in the EMS world. We'll talk about here the types of transports that Henry County offers. We have a BLS, a basic life support transport, which covers just a basic transport ride to the hospital for general sick calls and non-life-threatening emergencies. So this is your base ride to the hospital. We have an advanced life support 1, which is we, we refer to as ALS 1, and it's a base rate of $600. And what qualifies that as an ALS 1 transport is where we don't, it's beyond the basic life support, but it's not into, we may use one or two drugs, but it, again, it may not be life-threatening. This could be your anaphylactic reaction or minor trauma cause, it'll get into the ALS 1. The advanced life support 2 is where we get into use of multiple drugs in the back of the ambulance, such as a cardiac arrest, severe trauma, where we utilize a lot of our equipment, and a lot of times these patients are transported out of the county for severe trauma and to our local hospital, Piedmont Henry, for cardiac arrest and stroke. Our current mileage rate is $10 per mile, and that is when the patient is loaded in the back of the ambulance and being transported. So again, we've seen the last increase back in 2012, but the current, that increase still didn't bring us up to the local and national averages. So compared locally, here's, here's a chart showing our local charges with Henry County being in the second column there. You can see we're still below everybody in the local area, except for Butts County. Butts County is trending similar to ours, but they, they are currently working on an increase themselves. So you can see the averages down in the bottom chart are where we'd like to go or be close to. Again, chart showing where Henry County is compared to the local, local services around And if we look here compared to nationally, where our rates are at, you can see the difference of where we're at, and where we'd like to go will be on the next slide. So comparatively speaking to the local averages and national averages, where Henry County would like to go is bring our BLS services up from 500 to 700, ALS 1 from 600 to 900, ALS 2 from 725 to 11, and bring our mileage reimbursement cost up to $15 a mile. That again with a patient loaded. Where our payees come from? Commercial insurance is primarily the ones that are going to be affected. Medicaid and Medicare have set rates that they reimburse our travel and our bills. So they have a set rate, so that's non-negotiable. Most of it will be captured commercially from commercially insurance providers, and we do have a 6% that will affect our community for self-pay. However, we do have a payment program that we work with our citizens to pay these bills and work with them, as long as they maintain some type of activity on their account for 21, within a 21-day period, or, yes, 21 days, then we certainly will not turn them over to collections. So we work, we're very friendly with those folks that are self-paid. 21 weeks, isn't it? 21 weeks, I'm sorry, 21 weeks, my apologies. Yeah, 21 days would be kind of pushing it, wouldn't it? So here's the Medicaid, Medicare reimbursement rates that are set. So we'll see no cost increase there. Again, no denial of service to anybody who calls, and again, we'll continue to work with them on the, on the billing services. Why are we requesting this increase? Commission, we have, we have seen significant increases in the, in the cost of our equipment that we use. Henry County EMS is certainly one of the top-rated EMS services in, in the area. We've, we've got a 16% save rate from cardiac arrest in Henry County, and that's unheard of. But we have that save rate because of the new equipment that we have onboard of our ambulances and the training that goes into it. So, looking at the numbers of the equipment currently, we're looking at $200,000 now for an ambulance and $90,000 just to equip that ambulance with the new state-of-the-art equipment. So we're asking you to consider approving this resolution for an increase and allow us as an EMS community to continue annually to review the trends that are going on in EMS and make necessary changes with your approval in the future. So at this time, we're asking you, for you to consider approval of the resolution that's been provided for you, and I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Clemmons.
Let me just start by saying I support the proposed to increase the mileage, I mean the adjustment of the ambulance rate, but I want to be able to explain why the mileage rate that we have is higher than the national average on the $15 instead of the 13. Can you just explain?
On the mileage?
On the mileage, yes.
Yes, ma'am. Just because of the trends, we're asking for the 15. It doesn't have to be the 15, but because of the trending area, that's one area that we can recapture some of the funds that are expended because of Medicaid, Medicare. Medicaid and Medicare will pay for mileage.
Other questions? Commissioner Prince.
Just to clarify, because, you know, we have some concerns with the elderly and the, you know, people on fixed incomes.
Yes, sir.
They're the ones that use this service quite a bit, and we just want to make sure we're not hitting them. Medicare and Medicaid, you say they're on a set rate, and this still falls within the set rate so that?
That is correct.
The citizens will not have to come out of pocket.
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I've had some phone calls from some senior citizens, and they're just a little concerned, you know, we go up and then they get a transport, and they start getting bills, so.
No, sir, that's a set rate.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions would come to Commissioner Holmes, and then would come to Commissioner Wilson.
I heard you say that we won't be sending anybody to collections.
We, we do send people to collections if there's no activity.
If there's no activity. But I also looked at the, you know, we, we are comfortably positioned between both Clayton and the cab, and, you know, I know we're going up on the rates, but I think our rates probably should mirror the rates in our neighboring county, Clayton. I would feel more comfortable going with, with those rates as well.
All right, comments? Okay, we've got to go to Commissioner Wilson and then Commissioner Clemmons.
Sir, your suggestion is to go with the, with Clayton County rates?
I mean, you know, we're a metro area suburb of Atlanta, so is Clayton, so is the cab. We're not Butts, so if you're going to compare, we should be compared against the counties that neighbor the city of Atlanta.
Would you consider also bringing up the mileage from?
I would support it.
Support the mileage increase?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
The increase that we're asking from, from where we're at, the insurance is going to absorb most of the increase? Or are we asking for the patients to pay the difference in the increase?
The insurance, depending on your type of insurance, will absorb those costs, and that's a current trend that most insurance companies is covering. The only people that that would affect is the citizens that have high deductibles on their insurance. That would affect them, their out-of-pocket expenses there.
Okay, and also explain to me when you say we don't have any activity, what kind of activities a patient have to make for their, for the collections, for not to be handed over to collections?
If they have no activities such as phone calls, arrangements with our billing services along with AMB, the ambulance billing service that we use, if there's no contact, no information being exchanged, in other words, they're just ignoring all activities and making no contact, then it is finally eventually turned over, just same, that would be the same with you and I if we were ignoring our bills.
Okay, how about minimum payments? What, what's your minimum payments on?
There's not a minimum payment right now, Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Clemmons.
I'm, I'm content with the Clayton rates, as long as we don't take the mileage up to 15.
With 13?
Yep, that's good, yep.
So we'll follow the, follow the Clayton County rates and mileage up to $13. So we'll follow the, follow the Clayton County rates and mileage up to $13 an hour.
And can you again review what the Clayton rates are again compared to what you're proposing?
It's higher.
Yeah?
But it's closer to 13.
The current rates for Clayton County is BLS is 800, ALS one is 1100, ALS two is 1100, and mileage is at 10. If you propose we go to 13 or go to the 15 on the, on the mileage?
Okay, other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I'm hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
I move to approve.
With?
With a modification in the rates to mirror the Clayton County rates with mileage of 13.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
There is a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, we'll go to Commissioner Prince, then Commissioner Wilson.
Has staff reviewed the Clayton rates to see how that's going to affect us or how it's going to affect the citizens at all? Is that going to change anything with the Medicare and our?
It's not going to change anything with Medicaid and Medicare, no, sir.
Commissioner Prince, so with Medicaid and Medicaid work is although a bill is sent out, Medicare and Medicaid only pays a flat rate and we are not allowed to send any additional billing out after Medicare and Medicaid cover what they pay. There is no additional billing for Medicare and Medicaid patients.
All right, Commissioner Wilson, have a comment?
Okay, I was just asking Commissioner Holmes, he was, we want to mirror all the rates of Clayton County with the mileage as well or we changing the mileage?
Commissioner Clemmons said 13 on the miles.
Below average, below the national average, but well within what's around us in the jurisdiction. I just think the 15 was too high and 10 is probably too low. Considering the services that our fire department provides, this is going to help them to provide greater service to our community, I think 13 is, is fair.
So we're mirroring Clayton County's rates with the $13 mile, is that correct?
Well, again, I think that's what the point of clarification needs to me is that, can you again state what, what you were proposing and also what Clayton County is paying for each of the different rates?
What we're proposing now with, to mirror the Clayton County rates is for that Henry County BLS rates will go from 500 to the 800 consistent with Clayton County. ALS one will go from 600 to 1100, again to mirror Clayton County. ALS two will go from 725 to the 1100 and mileage from $10 in Henry County to the $13 mileage increase according to Ms. Clemmons.
Yeah, well, I, my, my personal comments, I definitely think that the mileage per mile should be around the 10, but I'm struggling with, you know, the significant increase of marrying to Clayton County because you were proposing for us to go to 700 versus 800 for BLS and from nine, and to go to 900 compared to Clayton County's 1100. And then of course ALS two remains about the same. So I'm having some, some challenges with that.
Commissioner Clemmons?
And I wasn't necessarily looking at Clayton as much as I was looking at what the national rates were. And I think that we're well within the national rates. I think what you were proposing was a little bit above national rates in some of the areas and a little below in other areas. And I think overall average it balances out the same. And I don't want us to get caught up in that it's a Clayton County rate as much as we're really looking at what the average national rates are.
Yes, ma'am.
So just want to make that clarification.
Okay, we've heard questions, comments, any other questions or comments? Okay, so there, there again is the motion and a second to marry the BLS to 800, the ALS one for 1100 and ALS two to 1100 and then the mileage per mile at 10. So we've heard that motion and we've heard a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Because it was 13, not 10. That was the issue.
Yes.
Ma'am.
Well, when you just made the motion, you put it at 10 and I was saying 13. It's if you go back to 13, yeah.
Okay. Well, let's clarify again. The motion again, again, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Holmes if you'll take that leave because you made the motion.
Yes, to mirror the Clayton County rates with the exception of the mileage, putting the mileage at $13. And that is my motion.
Okay, so we clarified the motion. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right, well, we'll now move now into the county manager's resolution regarding the acknowledgement of appointment of a member to the Board of Elections and Registrations by Sherri Matthews.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. The resolution before you this morning is a result of an appointment to our Board of Elections. In 2006, a local act was created by the Henry County Board of Elections and Registration and it requires that the governing authority, which is the Board of Commissioners, appoint a committee to choose the at-large member of the board. On August 15th, 2017, this board did pass a resolution, which was Resolution Number 17-245, appointing six members to serve on the nominating committee to fill a seat which had expired. The seat had expired by Mr. Arch Brown. On September 14th, 2017, the nominating committee met and voted to reappoint Mr. Arch Brown to the Board of Elections and Registrations to serve an additional four years. You have a resolution in front of you this morning just approving that reappointment and I will answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay, you've heard the presentation by Ms. Hopson. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a quick question. Are there minutes from the meeting on the vote? I mean, was the vote unanimous?
The vote was not unanimous, but there are minutes available from the meeting.
Okay. I was hoping that it would have been added to the, to this resolution.
I'm sorry.
The notes, the minutes, I was hoping it would be added to the resolution.
Would you like for us to attach the minutes to the resolution?
Correct.
Okay, we can, and we can certainly provide a copy of those minutes as well. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, no action is required by the board on this item. It simply needs to be reflected in the minutes that the committee has made to the appointment and it will be noted that the minutes from that meeting will be added to this resolution.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. We're now moving to the next resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with McIntosh Trail for premises located at 339 Phillips Drive.
Good morning again, Board members. On March 4th, 2014, Henry County and McIntosh Trail Community Service Board entered into an intergovernmental agreement to allow McIntosh Trail to lease premises located at 96 Work Camp Road from Henry County. In consultation with McIntosh Trail and our facility maintenance staff, it has been determined that the premises are no longer suitable for use in occupancy by McIntosh Trail. The county wanted to continue to be good neighbors with McIntosh Trail and we've identified an alternate property, which is 339 Phillips Drive, which is also commonly referred to as the Aubrey Harvey Building, in which we can relocate McIntosh Trail. So the resolution before you this morning is the, again, First Amendment to an intergovernmental lease agreement with McIntosh Trail. It is a one-year lease agreement and so we will again reevaluate it in a year. If you should have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. Still questions, my Commissioner Holmes?
Yes, I didn't see a lease in the presentation. I didn't see an old lease or a new lease. There are a few things that are blank in the, in the resolution. It seems like it's pretty incomplete. Can you talk to us about the rates of the original lease and are those rates going to be similar to, you know, to the new area in which they're moving into?
There was a previous resolution, which was 14-54, and under the previous lease agreement, the only responsibility for McIntosh Trail was to pay the utilities for the facility. The new location that they're relocating to at Aubrey Harvey Building, there will be no expenditures because we've already budgeted for those utility expenditures in the current fiscal year, but we're only going to do a one-year lease agreement with them since we're relocating them midstream. What we will do next year is in, when we bring the lease agreement back to the board, we will add that utility cost to it.
So they're not paying for the square footage that they're using?
No, sir, there is no cost to them at this time.
Okay, is there a reason why they don't pay square footage?
Well, the previous lease agreement back in 2014, they weren't paying square footage on that facility as, at all. And so we just want it to be consistent with what they already had, although we're not being consistent because we're allowing them to move into the facility without paying anything. But the funds have already been budgeted for that building and so that's why we didn't pass that cost on to them.
Is McIntosh Trail a nonprofit organization?
They are an agency through the state of Georgia, I believe. They're communities, they have a community service board and they do provide services for those individuals that have some type of mental dependency.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, other questions from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now moving to our public comment section where citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting and you must complete the public comment speaker form or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes and again, we just ask that we all respect each other's First Amendment rights and also that we are respectful as these comments are made. So at this time, we'll acknowledge our county clerk to acknowledge the public comment.
There are four public speakers this morning. Carl Swenson, Bill Tony, Larry Morrie, and Simeon Nunali.
Carl Swenson, Stockbridge, Georgia. Yes. Again, we're going to go over the First Amendment because we don't have one right now.
I can speak to the microphone, please.
Again, we're going to talk about the First Amendment because right now we don't seem to have one. "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof." Have any of you heard of 501(c)(3)'s, which all the churches have to belong to? The government now controls who these black robes in the, in the preaching profession will bow to. One of them's God and the other one is government. Or of abridging the freedom of speech. You guys have done a good job of that. We used to be able to address the board. We can't address the board anymore because they don't want to hear what we have to say. And you put us to the back of the bus. Or of the press. Well, do we have a press or do we have a probda? Because all we get is propaganda these days. Or of the right to people to assemble. And here's a good one. And to petition the government for a redress of grievances. Ladies and gentlemen, I got a call from Shavita McKay or McCammy yesterday from the DA's office. I followed the procedures that are within the law in order to get before the grand jury with criminal allegations that need to be heard by the grand jury. I followed the book. I followed the law. And I want to tell you right now that your DA's office, that you are over, is not following the law. They could care less about that. Wow. Why is that? Why would they be so brazen as to disallow a citizen from bringing forth allegations of criminal complaint? Well, as it turns out, it's because they don't know what I want to say. They're afraid of what I have to say. Are you afraid of what I have to say? Your DA's office is. Yeah, I'm upset. I'm upset because each and every one of you, when you took office, you had to sign and repeat the oath of office. And in that, in that oath, you pledged to support the Constitution. Now whether you know it or not, and I assume most of you don't, well, maybe you do, but most of you don't, that Constitution gives me and the people around me zero rights. Zero. That is a contract for you to keep your hands off of those rights. We don't get those rights and they are not privileges. But you treat them as such, flippantly. None of you here care that there may be criminal things going on within this county. None of you care. Because if you would, if you did, you'd walk down to that grand jury room with me on Thursday and you would make sure that I got to put my stuff before them. You would make sure because that is the proper thing to do. But you won't. You won't. And, you know, we changed out these flags. For that, I appreciate, I appreciate the effort, I really do. And I want to, I didn't say this the last time, but I want to say this again. There's only one court in the land where you will find a non-Gold Fringe flag flying. Do any of you know what that court is? No. It's the Supreme Court. And do you know why the Supreme Court doesn't fly the Gold Fringe? That is because they deal with the Constitution. Paddleford v. Hayes, Savannah, Georgia, the judge said, "You can't bring the Constitution into my courtroom because you, we, were not party to it." It's your contract with us. You're in breach of that contract and as long as you are in breach of that contract, when I come up here to talk to this Board of Directors, and that's what you are, a Board of Directors, I'm talking to empty seats because you do not respond in the constitutional form and manner that you took an oath to, to, to adhere to. You're not doing it. I'm sad. I'm sad for the people that died out in Las Vegas yesterday. And I'm sad that this is all happening because people like this board refuse to do their job. Thank you.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia. I'd like to direct this to Ms. Clemmons about the Nash Farms. I've really, really given it a lot of thought. Yesterday, I was in South Georgia. I looked at cotton fields and, you know, to the, to the black culture, this represents something. Well, my ancestors picked cotton in Fitzgerald, Georgia. My granddaddy was a, he was a supervisor in the mill for Avondale Mills. I want to show you something. This is the very first cotton I've ever picked in my life. I don't know if you've ever picked cotton or whatever, but see, we need to put the past in the past. We all, you know, my grandparents were in a mill village. You know, they, people looked at them like they were pure trash because they lived in a mill village. Now, I, I, I don't think that you lived that hard. You probably went to school, your parents were loving parents, you were probably dating this little girl and you were probably pampered pretty well. I don't know your story. I can tell you my story and that's it. Now, when you go to Nash Farms and you start taking away history, that's not the right thing to do. People are proud, just like you're proud of your family, you know, I'm proud of my family and we were looked upon really bad. I'll show you something. This is kind of crazy, but that was my mom's, one of her best days of the day that she got that washing machine. Can you say the same thing about your mom? We were poor, but I tell you what, we were proud, we worked hard. Now, if you would take your efforts and put it into these young black guys like you're wanting to do about a stupid flag and, and help mentor to those kids and get them coming up in the right way, making them responsible citizens, that's what you ought to be putting your time into, not showboating with that stuff. That's not right. These guys, they could care less. I mean, they're going to go along with you because they're scared to death of you because they, you know, they're going to say, I've heard Gary say, well, that's a racist thing. It's not a racist thing, it's a human thing. It's not a racist thing, it's a human thing. You know, you need to be putting your time in better things. I'm telling you, that's, you can do a whole lot better. I promise you that. Now, this right here, I don't intend, I don't mean to offend anybody with this. I really don't. But the truth is the truth. Okay? I'm, I'm, this right here, real quick. We get one of these every year from Yamaha. It's a friendship thing. Now, I don't send it back and tell them, well, you bombed Pearl Harbor, so I'm not buying any of your products or anything like that. I'm sure everybody in here has either had a Japanese car, but we don't do that. Put the past in the past. You need to invite the people, the Nash Farm people back over there. Let them have their museum. It's not gonna hurt anything. It's gonna help you. It'll help you a lot better. Search your heart. Don't live with hate. I'm not living with it. I showed that to Sherri a while ago, and the look on your face was just unbelievable, that just like I was holding a cross to a vampire. It shouldn't be that way. We're all human beings. We're in it together. We're all Americans. Think of it like that. History's history. You know, we're not gonna repeat history. They were slaves long before that, long before that, back when Jesus was here. I mean, it's not a big deal. It's the past. Let's go for the future, not the past. And by the way, I got 30 seconds left. Do the right thing on the Water Authority. Let's get rid of those two mills on the Water Authority. I'm gonna say it every meeting until y'all do something about it. Or if the right person gets in that seat, I promise you, he will do something about it. I mark my words. We ain't gonna let it go. I'm tired of the Water Authority raping the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Larry Maury with Ethics in Government. In 1788, James Madison, who signed the Constitution in cursive, wide sweeping letters, they asked him, said, "Why did you do that?" He said, "It's very simple. I want the King of England to know that I signed the Constitution." 1788, this is what he said. "In 200 years, the law will become so voluminous, there'll be no substance of the law." You know what he said in Luke? "Woe be unto ye lawyers." Says a lot of bad stuff about lawyers because today, we interpretate the law how we want to do it. But the Bible says that we got it wrong. Says, "There's a way that seemeth right unto man, but the end thereof is death, hell, and the grave." I'll read you another verse verbatim. "These things have I spoken to ye, that ye should know, should not be offended. They shall put you out of the synagogue. Yea, the time cometh that whosoever killeth you will think, think that he doeth God's service. And things, and these things will they do unto you because they have not known the Father nor Me." You think you're doing the right thing when you mistreat people. But see, my daddy taught me in that cotton patch, what goes around, come around. What you do today will be uncovered tomorrow. And when you vote a lot of times up there, y'all may think you're doing what you want to do, but there's gonna come a day that you're gonna give account for it. That don't lie. Now, I'm gonna, here's a publication, and I hope all of you will come and get a copy of it afterwards. But it talks about where Henry County is. They're number two. Cities where residents are poorer than average, cities where a high number of residents are high school dropouts, high drug use, higher-than-average payday loan outlets and dollar stores, violence measured by aggravated assaults as high as measured, cities with high number of residents on welfare. Just keep going. If you, if, you know, if you, just keep going. It's just gonna get worse, and it'll get better until you get your hearts right and start governing from moral character rather than what you want as a leader, so-called leader. Now, you can get up here and take pictures, and we can pat each other on the back, and we can kiss each other and love each other, but if you have not the love of man nor God, you're just heaping unto yourselves colds that's gonna burn you in hell. I'm not a preacher. I don't claim to be a preacher. But I will tell you one thing. I read that, and I challenge any one of you to come sit down with me and study it together. Let's see what it says. Let's take what is ruled from on that bench and see what it rightfully says. I don't want to be, let's take the ambulance service, for instance. I don't want to be gazed by DeKalb County and Clayton County. I heard, I hear that every time from, from Mr. Holmes. Clayton County. I don't live in Clayton County. I live in Henry County. I want to, I want to cut costs and increase services. That's what it's all about. Real simple. But I know there's a lot of drugs in them ambulances. When I was a commissioner, we drug tested. Every one of them, the ambulance driver was on drugs except one. You can say, "Well, we don't do that in Henry County." Well, I had a little situation with a female that been arrested cocaine twice, convicted twice, and was in jail the third time on drugs. She lived with an employee of the ambulance service. And this is what she said, and it's what I said. Closest way to drugs without having to go down to the quarters. That was her statement. You know, there may be a way that seemeth right to you, but if you don't care, it ain't right. Two wrongs do not make a right. And if it's wrong, it's wrong. You better start governing instead of playing pitty-patty and picture-taking. Your county depends on it.
Thank you, Mr. Maury.
I don't think you can, they'd like to see that.
Good evening.
Good morning.
My name's Simeon Nunnally. I am of 134 Woodson Court. I come to you about Confederate statues. I'm glad that my friend opened up the discussion by stating that let history be history and let the past be the past. It is literally often forgot that Mr. Robert E. Lee himself stated that he believed that we should remove the source of war and allow the past to be the past. Even his grandchildren, his great-grandchildren, the descendants of Mr. Robert E. Lee himself said that we should also remove those Confederate statues so we can also keep a united front. So with that being said, I do want to say that McDonough itself, the city of McDonough, actually have moved forward and removed themselves from cotton picking, like my friend so diligently decided to demonstrate today in front of the board. We are in a new era. We are in a new time, and that time is unity. That time is right now. We need to continue to move forward and be like most of the country to remove these Confederate statues, which are a hindrance, a reminder of what happened way back when. I came to the board not too long ago to propose to a rec of a United States Navy soldier who fought for the rights, the liberty, pursuit of happiness for everyone amongst the country. And personnel still decided that they want to lean more towards divisiveness in the country. So once again, I do prevent that to the board, to ask them to continue to take that in consideration because the city continues to say that that property belongs to the county. The county said that property belongs to the city. So I would like to find out where can we start opening dialogue to see what can the citizens of McDonough have the right to state what they want, what they need, if they want to move forward or remove or whatever the case may be. So that's all I have, and I hope that y'all continue to take that into consideration. Thank you much.
Thank you. And I think that concludes our public comment section. All right, thank you. We will now move into the approval of our minutes for the September 19th regular Board of Commissioners meeting and also the September 20th called Board of Commissioners meeting regarding the 2040 Comprehensive Plan Update. Are there any changes or revisions regarding those minutes? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Shall move.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We're now moving to the Chair and Commissioner comments. Are there any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Prince?
Chair, I just think it may be appropriate for us to have a moment of silence for the citizens that were killed in Las Vegas.
I think that's appropriate. Very good. It has been requested by Commissioner Prince that we take a...
I also had Puerto Rico in there as well.
Yes, Las Vegas, Puerto Rico, and all of those that have been impacted by the hurricanes. I would like to add to that as well. Okay. We'll now take that moment of silence. Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Hearing none, we'll move into the county manager's comments.
Yes, Chairwood, just a couple of comments. As you will notice on the agenda this morning, we do have GDOT that will be coming in at 11 o'clock to present to the board an update on the projects that are ongoing within their work program. Staff did relocate that meeting to Conference Room B because there are a number of maps that we're going to have to review and some PowerPoint presentations that GDOT staff will be presenting. But it is a meeting that is open to the public, and I would certainly invite anyone who would like to know what projects are going on at the state level to certainly attend that meeting. So I did want to put that out there because it is on the agenda. Other than that, I have no further comments.
Okay, thank you. So we're now moving to our upcoming meetings and events. On October 3rd at 9 o'clock would be, that is actually today. Our October 17th Board of Commissioners meeting will be held at 6:30 PM at our regularly scheduled time. And then again, we're about to move into our next agenda item regarding the Georgia Department of Transportation presentation. All of our guests that are here today, citizens, please feel free to join in in Conference Room B. There will be a presentation with maps for the board to also hear of that presentation. So at this time, we've also noted that we will not have an executive session today, so therefore, we'll move into the final item regarding, moving into the GDOT presentations, after which we will adjourn the meeting from there. Again, everyone is welcome to join us in Conference Room B.